And it is certainly on display tonight. The BVRA first announced this debate in its Canada Day newsletter. During the month of July, the list of candidates grew to a total of 12 across the first four tiers of government. All 12 candidates were invited by the BVRA. All 12 candidates initially accepted and then went declined. The BVRA reached out to Lappin Associates in Ottawa who specialize in providing expertise in municipal and federal elections. With their guidance and insight, tonight's debate was shaped. We wanted a fair and impartial format, given the number of candidates. We felt it was important that the candidates be given their time in the spotlight, which is why we chose to have only one tier of government onstage at a time. And equally important, we wanted you, the audience, to see the candidates onstage within the context of the office they are running for and not lost in a larger group with all the candidates onstage at once. Furthermore, we wanted to foster an atmosphere of a conversation, which is why we have chosen to have chairs and a side table onstage and not have the candidates sitting behind the table. The order is town council first, followed by town and region, mayor, and then regional chair. Tonight...
You have a ball name.
Who's Beth Thompson?
I'm sorry?
You have a ball name.
Beth? I'm sorry. Who shot the guy who wrote that? Tonight, before the meet and greet, the candidates participated in a draw to establish the order for their opening statements. This order will be followed sequentially, so that the first question goes to the candidate who gave their opening statement second. The rules for the debate and code of conduct were provided to each of the candidates in advance, and I'll review them now. By agreeing to participate in the Ward One debate, the candidates agreed to comply with the BVRA's following code of conduct. All candidates will conduct themselves in a professional and businesslike manner throughout the entirety of the debate, being respectful and courteous to their fellow candidates as well as to those in the audience. The format: Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. There will be three rounds of questions, and we just originally, we were going to do a minute and a half per answer, but we found out that the tablet we're using just does round numbers, so bonus for the candidates, they'll have a two full minutes to answer the questions. And then each closing statement will be two minutes in length as well. Let's talk about the questions. First, none of the candidates have received the questions in advance. Second, the first two questions tonight were received by the BVRA... Through the BVRA's initiative, do you have a question for the candidates? Members of the public were invited to submit their questions to the BVRA emails address. This initiative was broadcast through Print-Ex, Post-it flyers, the BVRA's newsletter, and membership email blast. We grouped the questions for the appropriate tier of government most able to address the specific question or concern. Third, the third question tonight comes from you, the audience. Question cards like this one were available at the sign-in table. We've collected them, and we're reviewing them, and we'll pick the most appropriate question based on the topic and a question not already scheduled to be asked in the first two rounds. It must be noted that the level of engagement of the community, and Shelley addressed this a bit earlier, as observed by the range and depth of the questions we received, clearly demonstrates an actively engaged community, and it's a credit to each and every one of you in attendance here tonight. Tonight's timekeeper is Ty Goss from the BVRA. Ty is strategically seated in the front row with his tablet and the timer function, and with 30 seconds left, the candidates will also see a yellow fan, and with 15 seconds left, he's going to wave a red fan, and when time is up, the candidates will hear... And the candidates will hear... Thank you, Ty. What's also interesting is we were looking for something that was red and yellow, and his fan is made up of tongue dispense...uh, tongue dispens...uh, depressors? Thank you. So I'm thinking that's kind of symbolic. I'm just saying. We covered the debate format and questions, so now let's shift our attention to you, the audience. We invite the audience to applaud after each opening statement and after each closing statement. We respectfully ask, however, that the candidates' answers are not interrupted either by applause or any form of disapproval, or at the conclusion of each answer. And we thank you in advance for your cooperation. We're here tonight to listen, to be informed, and for those who are undecided, this debate hopefully provides an opportunity to help shape a decision. So, without further ado, I'd like to call to the stage in the order of the draw for town council. So if we're ready, John Richworth, June Campbell, Donovan Cox, and Beth Thompson. Ty, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. So, June, you want to start first? Uh, yes. One page. John, would you please start?
There we go. Thank you, Harry. First of all, I want to thank the BVRA for the hard work in putting this amazing event together tonight. What a great turnout. I'm so glad that all of you have taken time out of your busy schedules and have continued to show an interest in municipal politics. As mentioned before, my wife, Denise, and I have lived here in Ward One for over 25 years. We have raised our family here, and in the past 10 years, I've had the privilege to work here in Bronte. I have chosen three words to encompass my philosophy from that campaign: vision, vitality, and visibility. My vision: As residents of Ward One, we have to be clear in the understanding of what we want our community to be. In a community with so many different views and opinions, we may not always agree, but I'm confident we all want a safe and well-maintained Ward One where youth, seniors, and singles love to live, work, and grow. Our community should be done with mindful and insight when we're planning future projects. The second one is vitality. We all want a community that prides itself in vitality, and it contributes to build on the true meaning of livable Oakville. We thrive where we can experience cultural celebrations, festivals, and community events that give us an opportunity to interact with a diverse group of people who make up the mosaic of our community. And finally, visibility. It is crucial that municipalities continue beyond the elections to have strong... That's me done? So there we go.
Are we ready, Ty? Okay.
Hi, I'm June Campbell. I'm running for council in Ward One. I would like to thank outgoing councillor Ralph Robinson for his tireless years of work. Just a little bit about myself, I've lived in Oakville for 25 years. My husband and I have lived in three different houses throughout Oakville. We started out in not-so-trainee Lake...uh, Per Village and are now in beautiful Lake Shore Woods. We have two grown children still living at home, and I was very active in our local public school. People may have noticed that I don't have any lawn signs. I find that they're visual noise, and they're very wasteful, and in a few weeks, they'll be landfill. So instead, I decided I would donate some money to the Kerr Street Mission. I realize it's not the same, and the best way to get the maximum number of eyeballs on your name is lawn signs, but I just felt that was a better use of the money. I don't come from the business world, but you don't have to do this job. The more important thing is that I will listen to your concerns and do what you would like done, not so much what I have in mind, although I do have a few little things I'd like to look into. Ultimately, my opinion is not always important. It's your opinions and your concerns that matter, and that's what I'll look into.
Thank you for coming up today. My name is Donovan Cox, and it's great to be here with you, with all our fellow residents, and to interact. My family moved to Oakville about 30 years ago, and we came to the Spears Road corridor where we built quite a thriving business in the aerospace community. And I learned a lot of tools about growth through that experience, which I took into down into the Caribbean, into South America, on future projects. I have background in growth, and that's the main issue that I've been talked about from residents. So I disagree. I think business tools can be very helpful, and I apply these tools to turn complexity into performance. In my view, the Livable Oakville Plan is a fantastic strategy. It's very innovative, and that, to me, is the target: making this the best place to live in Canada, and will continue to do so. But based on the voices of the community...I have an undergraduate degree in political philosophy and ethics, and I was saying to somebody the other day, when I'm canvassing and walking through the community, I hear the voices of Plato and Aristotle and John Stuart Mill, and they all talk about citizenry as the essential engine to a flourishing community. And so to me, it's very important, diverse points of view count, and the banging up of those point of view give birth to solutions. That's why I want to be town councillor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harry and the Bronte Village Residents Association for this debate. I first want to acknowledge my gratitude to the ancestors and first keepers of the lands of Ward One, the Mississaugas of the New Credit. Welcome, Ward One residents and fellow candidates. I am Beth Robertson, and I am thrilled to be running for Ward One Town Councillor. My husband Tim and I moved to Oakville 30 years ago and raised our daughter and two sons here, enjoying the many blessings of Ward One. I retired from teaching in 2017 after 32 amazing years working with young people. I have coached 12 over 80 school and Oakville community teams. I am especially proud of founding the St. Thomas Aquinas High School Peace and Justice Club, which raised over $100,000 to go to local and national nonprofit profits over 14 years. I play soccer, dragon boat, and volunteer in Oakville. This is who I am: An active community member with leadership, vision, and experience. What sets me apart from the other candidates, I believe it starts with my love of meeting with residents and really listening to you. Over a year ago, I joined Lake Shore Woods' Facebook group and participated in their 2018 Earth Day Cleanup and Tree Planting Day. I heard their concerns regarding break-ins and attended the community safety session that councillor Sean O'Meara organized with the Halton Police in March. I am pleased that the break-in rate has lowered significantly, and this shows what a community and council can do when they work together. I believe in the power of dialogue to build consensus on the issues that challenge Bronte within the Livable Oakville Plan, whether it's Lake Shore Road's design, traffic congestion, or the scope of new builds. I want to welcome the Bronte Creek community of Ward One. I will be fully engaged in their needs too.
All right, so let's get into it. Question number one. And question number one goes to June. The question has two parts. It's rather meaty, so I'll be happy to repeat it as required, and I'll read it out. "Ward One is experiencing a flux of current and pending developments, which for the most part are welcomed as revitalization process. There are community issues surrounding several of these developments." And I'll just name a few of them. 2220 Marine Drive, 27...uh, 27-unit four-story building. Sovereign and E Street, 19 townhomes. 2323 Beliea Street, 20 townhomes including six rental apartments. 121 and 125 East Street, St. Anne's Court, six townhomes. Bronte Village Mall redevelopment, 478 rental units. There's also the Cudmore redevelopment and uncertainty with what will be developed at Lake Shore Road and in E Street. So the question is as follows: Can you outline your position on intensification and its effects on the area and livability? And do you agree or disagree with the town council's unanimous decision concerning 2220 Marine Drive and why?
My position on intensification in Bronte Village is that it needs to be done sensibly. You can't just build a...what is it, 27-unit building in a parking lot. I was in that parking lot the other day. It doesn't seem like there's enough space in there to put a whole other development. There needs to be some development. There needs to be some intensification because Bronte Village needs to have people to support businesses. But it has to be done in a sensible way and in a way that could enhance the village rather than cause over-intensification of traffic, which is already bad enough, and there are concerns with the parking rush at 2220 Marine Drive. So no, I guess I don't agree with the unanimous decision of council. What? It was Tim...
It was Tim.
It was me.
It was me. Oh, can I take a break? You missed that one.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, June? So next up is Donovan, and I'll be happy to read the two questions. No, that's question two. We need to go back to question one, please. So the header is "Ward One is experiencing a flux of current and pending developments, which for the most part are welcomed as a revitalization process. There are some community issues." So, one, can you outline your position on intensification and its effects on the area and livability? And two, do you agree or disagree with the town council's unanimous decision concerning 2220 Marine Drive and why?
I think...excuse me. Can anybody hear me okay? I think the intensification in this area is a problem because we see symptoms of a stressed infrastructure, as is building marshals ahead. However, these are important projects. They themselves are businesses, and these are part of the businesses that we bring into the community. So, you know, there's a couple things going on here, but I think we're in a new time, in a new phase of growth that perhaps we haven't seen in Oakville. And these projects are underway. They've been planned. They've been approved. We have to support them. We have to do a better job of developing our infrastructure in advance of the building. I do support the town's decision to fight against the 22...it's not...I'm sorry. 2220 Marine Drive. The town follows a very specific process, and I have a lot of confidence and faith in it. And, you know, they spent a lot of time deliberating over this, and yes, I'm in agreement with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
I understand that the growth hub of Bronte Village itself was set because of the province's targets for population growth in Oakville. And foot traffic is great. Being able to shop in your local community is a wonderful thing, and that's what you hope happens. The problem is we haven't kept up the infrastructure to go with the intensification. So while it will be wonderful to see that 475-unit rental building replace Travolver Village, which has looked so rundown for so many years, the cars and the parking haven't been properly addressed for the number of people that will have cars in that building. To go on to the 2220 Marine, it's outside the growth hub. There's nothing to say that things cannot grow outside of the growth hub, but the feedback of residents has got to be something that definitely gears us toward our final decisions. So I agree with the town. When I door-knocked in Ennis Claire, when I door-knocked around Reflection Bay townhouses, when I've been to any of the buildings around, the residents are clear that they don't want the extra traffic in that little confined, tiny bit of green space. Green space is important. We live with that green space being that beautiful part of us, so I would like to see that protected, and I think it's something that we can, through the OMB process, really cling and keep our position on. Thank you.
I think this is something that has come up in about every meeting that I've had over the last several months, about the challenge between development and infrastructure and what's happening. And let's face it, that some of the projects that we're talking about are clearly already under construction with Pompyreek and the development of the Bronte Village Mall. We were, you know, the train has already left the station. The decisions are being made, and now what we're going to be doing is facing how does that affect us, as the people that are living in Ward One. Some of the other projects are not as aware of, but certainly the project on Marine Drive has become a big issue for the Ennis Claire and for the people at the lighthouse and beyond us. When I look at that piece of property of the postage stamp and see what they would like to do with that, and the fact that they want to bring it right to the edge with little or no parking, it doesn't make sense to have that project go forward, and I know that the council has currently said that it's going to not support that. However, there is a balance. I mean, I said this in the meeting yesterday. We're in a situation where half of our population is watered, and so the stores and the businesses that make Bronte their home needs intensification to be able to help them continue to grow, and we need to do that in a balanced way. I think I said that earlier. We need to be able to make sense and make the right decisions. Certainly, buildings could be built in a way that they're recessing off the street and not just up against the street, and I certainly think we have to look beyond live work because those are small units and they tend to just provide services and not retail locations that would work on a long-term basis. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Question number two. This is a three-parter. Parking, traffic congestion, and speeding have become contentious issues in Ward One. So the three questions are: How do you propose to increase both on-street and off-street parking in Bronte Village? How would you ensure that future development applications include adequate provisions for visitor parking and not contribute to the lack of parking in the area? And three, how would you address traffic congestions on main roads and speeding on side streets, especially near school zones and senior living areas? And Donovan, this goes to you first.
Okay, in terms of the first question, I'm from Hamilton, and there is an option to park on one side of the street, shift it halfway through the month to the other side of the street. But that type of parking also increases safety issues. It's difficult for the driver to see people jumping out between cars. So there's, you know, that's a solution. There are other possibilities. There are all kinds of possibilities as far as controlling parking goes. There is metering, but there's not a desire for metering in the area. There are other parking space availability, but that, it's not a desire to use the parking in the specific locations. People like to be right near where they're going. What I believe we should do is we should look at other jurisdictions who have been in a similar problem. We should look at other models, and we should borrow from their models who have found real solutions. We should do, and it doesn't take long to do a study, but we should do a formal study on this. Right now, there's just ideas coming from the community, but kind of loose ideas. We need a formal study. We need to get to the bottom of this problem and implement it. Sir, I'm just having difficulty seeing the second question. Future development applications. Future development applications have to include suitable parking. Amica did not have suitable parking in its development. The new Bronte Village Mall doesn't have adequate parking to support its building. We have to have adequate parking for these facilities, including adequate visitor parking. There are other problems. I live in front of the shore. Thank you.
Question number three comes from the audience. I don't have that...oh, I apologize. I promised I wasn't going to do that, and it happened.
In terms of parking, traffic congestion, and speeding, parking is one of the big things that, yes, before you give any permit for parking for a building to be developed, they must show that they have not enough, not only parking for visitors, but also parking for staff. And every building has some staff that comes into it, whether it's maintenance or anything, so they have to have that parking built in. I know at 220 Marine, their plan for that site had, everyone was going to have one car only, and we know that in Oakville, that's not how it works. I would love it to be. I would love to see more people on a bus, but until that happens, it's not, we have to have parking built in. In terms of future development applications, that goes with the parking, and one of the things I've said even in my platform in the beginning is I want to see one-side-only parking, and I want it to be there always so that 12 streets aren't roped off for events. I don't think it's necessary to close our streets down completely for events. I would love to see one side permanently on it. It is in the north. All streets are one-side only. So in the south, if it's one-side only, and I don't think they flip in the north, they just are always one-side only. So it's something definitely that we can consider for everything, so we don't shut down for events, that people can park, people can have their friends over if there is an event, and they have parking for them. In terms of speeding... In terms of speeding, from my platform, right from the beginning, I have said I would love to see 40 kilometers an hour in all residential streets. I think that if we can get the mentality of everyone who's so busy in Oakville to go to 40 and then probably drive 50 instead of 60 and 70, it makes it safer for our pedestrians, for our cyclists and for kids to get to school on their bikes instead of having cars drive them all the time.
John, would you like me to read your questions?
I think the first...
Yep, you're good.
There we go, Monty. The first question is talking a little bit about the parking and this has been an ongoing issue for a while in Bronte. We have about 200 public parking spots in Bronte Village. And over the last little while, we're all keenly aware that that parking has been drastically reduced with the development of Palm Beach with their private blocks not being available for only shoppers and also certainly at DAF Par, which is where Denner exists. And this has continued to be a huge issue as we move forward because the, there is not the understanding, my understanding from the town, that we can build parking lots. We don't have revenue coming in like Hurst Street does and downtown Oakville. So therefore, having a parking area that we can build, you know, multi-level is not going to happen in the, in the short-term period. The other thing too, that the town went to examples of trying to find parking and there were additional parking spaces available down by the conference center and also by the cenotaph. That was probably about 150 spots. They just weren't well-marked. And those could have been used and when you come up from those stairs, you actually are going right up onto Bronte Road and accessing the stores that are there. In addition to that, we know that the, the development of properties that haven't got adequate parking and certainly the one in Marine, from what I understand, has not had proper parking. There is a concern with people parking out on the streets and they have that issue. And I think the other thing that comes back to it is the speeding is, is an issue for sure. We just have to have police monitoring this. In my area, we have tremendous problems with speed and also not using the traffic circles properly. And that is the start of education. We need to be able to make sure we're monitoring that. Thank you.
As for on- and off-street parking, there might have to be some parking leaders brought in so that we can have a fund of money, so that we can build eventually more parking areas. But we could put in diagonal parking on Lake Shore, use some of the sidewalk area to do diagonal parking. And yes, we need to address parking spaces for the new developments. 1.1 parking space per one-bedroom unit probably isn't enough. And 1.2 parking spaces per two-bedroom unit is not enough. A two-bedroom unit is going to have two adults in it probably and that's going to mean two cars. As for congestion, I'd really like to have a look at the public transit system. We need to get more buses on. Bellville just instituted a, an on-demand parking bus app so you can call up a bus to come and get you. That might be something to look into. If we can get more people on buses, maybe we can convince some people to leave their cars at home. 40-kilometer-an-hour speed limit does sound like a good idea on residential streets, but it doesn't help on Lake Shore. And I've seen the people speed past part of school buses letting children off on Lake Shore. So we need to get more enforcement down there to make sure that people are obeying the speed limits that are out there. So I think public transit needs public...
Thank you. So now, this is question number three. So question number three, and Beth will go first. Are you in favor of marijuana retail stores in Oakville?
Good. I was waiting for this question. That's good. Let's get this out in the open. The town has a right to opt-out up till January of 2019. I have said since the beginning that I would prefer us not to opt-out. I would prefer us to do diligence, but not be naive that if we defer this for a year, our problem isn't going to go away. As a high school teacher, I know kids use. And so I would rather keep it controlled away from schools, keep the black market out of Oakville that get to those high school kids. And this is a chance for us to start that process properly. I realize enforcement is the biggest problem. I realize it's expensive. I think that the amount that the cities are getting for enforcement is like $25,000 when it will cost us thousands to enforce. I don't want to see marijuana in parks. I think that's a pretty simple one because we don't allow cigarettes in our parks now. So if we do this right and we come together at the very beginning, we should not opt-out, but we should be clear about what we're controlling and how we're controlling it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we all knew this question was coming. I think the town should not, I, I think the town should not opt-out of this. I know there's a very short window of time. January will be here before we know it. I think we also have to realize that the train has left the station. We live in a country now where legalized marijuana is going to be available. The question comes back to us, how do we control that and how do we make it safe for Ward One and the rest of Oakville? There are examples of other Canadian cities that have already started late on a plan. There is considerable amount of revenue that brings in for these dispensaries. I understand the average wage is about $22 an hour, which is certainly a little bit higher than what we're paying at retail. I think the other thing that we have to do, and Beth kind of talked about this, is we have to take away maybe our own personal attitudes or the attitudes of the residents of maybe feeling about more marijuana and the stigma that goes along with it and maybe the perception of what it does. It's not just the fact that there is, we know this, marijuana is being used by kids in Oakville and anyone who doesn't think that that's happening, I, I just don't know. It's, we have to realize that. The second piece that's also going to come back with this is the fact that we also have to be able to control the issues of what Beth was talking about with where we can smoke it. If you can smoke cigarettes, you can actually smoke pot. But the biggest thing is there's lots of people also, some in this room that are using marijuana for helping with other things like shingles and other situations. So we can't just label it as that evil demon drug. I think we have to be really open and look at the different process of how it's being used to help them.
Yes. I think we should probably open a few stores, keep a tight lid on it and keep sort of a test pilot to see how it works out. We need to work with community organizations like Narbonne and Resiliency for Recovery to see how it's affecting on the other end. But there are a lot of people who use marijuana for legitimate reasons other than just getting high, for paying medication, for all sorts of legitimate medical reasons. So we can't take it away from people who need it. And if it's just for recreation, that's probably okay too. People drink alcohol and things worked out with that, so. But we keep a tight lid on how it's sold and who it's sold to. So I think we need to people it on it. But it's out there and it's going to be out there for a while.
I was trying to understand marijuana early on because, you know, it's a complex matter. It affects, it affects more areas in the municipality than we might think. What I did, I went to a conference on this amendment with people from Denver, where it's been, well, Colorado, it's been legal in Colorado for five years. I wanted to understand their experiences, what they did right, what they did wrong, what affected their community. I'm a big believer in looking at other jurisdictions to find out models of how we might do things and implement it into our own community. I also met with Canadian policymakers, federal policymakers, to understand what they're thinking and people from the community, from Toronto, licensing, government folks. My assessment, we're kind of doing a trial and error thing. We're not really ready for it. It's going to be, okay, we'll kind of see how it goes. And I, you know, my feeling on it, because I have kids in high school, I'm concerned with it being misused by young kids in particular. My feeling on it is we shouldn't experiment with our community. We might consider opting out just for a brief period to see how it's implemented in Toronto and wait till licensing has been put in place and see how policies are shaped. And then we can, and then we can adapt, see what goes on and bring it into our own community. I mean, anybody can order it online as of October 17th anyways. It's not going to affect the recreational users per se. And it's, it's available medically, you know. What we're talking about is not necessarily adding it on the ground, sold in, in retail stores until we know what's going on. And I don't think the black market's going to disappear just because it's sold in stores. The prices are high.
So now we've come to the closing statements. And according to my calculation, John goes first. Yes, it's the sequence, so let's just...
So why do I deserve your support? As mentioned before, our families live here for over 25 years. My passion for this community will be the driving factor when I am your town councillor. I have vested interest in you as an important voice at council. As a councillor, I will address unique issues that face neighborhoods in the ward. Hearing from all of you with the door-to-door campaigns, these include traffic congestion, pedestrian cycle safety, future developments, parking and ensuring the vital business community. I have a very solid background that makes me qualified as a councillor with over 35 years senior work and experience in private and public sectors. I have been involved in many large-scale events and marketing initiatives, including Oakville's award-winning Canada Day. As a result, I have had expertise in working with committees and departments in the town, including Parks, Traffic and Transit and Emergency Services. I have met with many councillors from across Canada and have the pleasure of attending the Federation of Canadian Municipalities National Conference. This gives me the unique ability to walk into the town hall and hit the ground running as your councillor. I've sat on a number of boards that include Big Brother's, Hopeful Chamber of Commerce, and I was a founding member of Lake Ontario Water Keepers. I look forward to your support. I care. I listen. My philosophy is simple. I will focus on what is right, not who is right.
I would like very much to work with council for many issues. There's so many that it's hard to address in two minutes or less. Things like in the north end of Ward One, they need some trees and a recreation center and somewhere for people to gather, like a grocery store. Many things that might not be in Ward One, but they need to be close to Ward One. Bronte Village needs something that's a draw. Bronte Village is a designated tourist area. They need something that brings people in so that people will want to come in, visit, stay, shop at stores, eat in restaurants. And for that, we also need to provide ample parking and make sure that there's a place that you can leave your cars safely without coming back to find that it's been taken away. That's about, just like to work with council and be your voice on council.
I've lived in Oakville for a long time and worked in the industry. In recent years, my wife decided to start a new career. I had the job home of, a job of staying home and raising the kids. And a lot, a big part of that, that's what brought me into the community. As you all know, when you have kids, you get involved. A statistic I learned along the way that was very important and I tested it out, and that was 95% of our community feel a sense of belonging and feel very safe. And, you know, I've worked throughout the world and that statistic just doesn't happen. I live at Glendale-Cottis, just at the foot, just up, just up Bronte Marine at the foot of Bronte Road. It's a 200-year-old house and I've learned about the history. Boy, we have a wonderful history. But one thing you see very clearly going back a couple hundred years is a town is always in growth. It's always in growth. And here we are at a different phase. But we're not, you know, we're not really stressed. As I say, you don't get that 95% statistic when things are out of control. You just don't get it. We're very much in control and we're, we're fiscally strong. So we can do a lot together to develop the community. And that's what I'm looking forward to as your new town councillor, interacting with you and bringing your voice to City Hall, to Town Hall, to make your voice heard. Thank you.
First, I want to acknowledge the 36 years of service by our current incumbent, Ralph Robinson. You have served as a role model of what it means to be a true servant leader for this ward and for Oakville residents. So thank you, Ralph, for all you have done. I have been knocking on doors since the first day of August and I have been listening to residents in every part of the ward. I promise that this will not be only an election-time ritual. I will continue to come to your doors and listen. I will be thrilled to come and support your community and charity events. I will respond to your emails, your telephone calls, your Facebook posts. I will keep you informed. Armed with the many lessons I've learned from my late husband, Tim, who journeyed with ALS, I am ready to stand strong for Ward One. I learned the art advocacy for accessibility in healthcare. I learned the importance of community because it took a village of family and friends to see him through 13 years with the disease. I learned to balance how to be a mom, a caregiver, a teacher and a community volunteer. I am now prepared to be the full-time service of Ward One residents with the same dedication. There were things I did not know about ALS, but I researched and worked to address them with Tim. Just as there are many current and emerging issues for Ward One that I will study and consider for your collective benefit. Tim taught me about strength and resilience and how issue-solving is best done in collaboration. I will be your strong voice for Ward One. I ask that you consider my platform and on October 22nd, vote for a councillor who really wants to do the job for you. wants to do the job for you. I respectfully ask you to vote for Beth.
Good, thanks for all the candidates. So if you didn't have a moment, you can give applause. Thank you. So now I'd like to call to the stage the town and regional councillors. And I'll do it in the order of the draw, which is Rumar Khan, Obaro Akomina and Sean Amero.